How you doing?
Good to see you, sir.
Our meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mayor Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Toma.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Please stand, remain standing for the prayer and the pledge. Oh God, our Lord, as we gather for this meeting, may your wisdom and counsel guide us as we seek to act in a way that will benefit all the citizens of this great city. Help us to think carefully before we speak, to act with courage and conviction for the good of all, and to deal charitably with one another. Let our accomplishments be built upon the firm foundation of wisdom, charity, and justice, and may our work bring credit and benefit to those we seek to serve and to your great honor and glory. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, under communication, those about to speak on matters not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, you will be heard when the item is considered. Yes, sir, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you all for having me, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City officials. I appreciate having a moment to introduce myself. Many of you all I've had the pleasure to work with and have met on a number of occasions on my see every day. My name is Chris Collins, and I work for Senator Tim Kaine here in Danville, and I'm the Senator's Regional Director for Southside Virginia. Our office is right down the street from here. You can literally throw a baseball at it, right down the hall from Congressman Hurt. So, you know, I just wanted to say that we are here, we're open, you know, our two main functions really are first casework and outreach. The outreach is exactly what you see now, us, you know, letting you all know that we're here to be a face, and eyes, ears for the Senator. If there's concerns you want to have passed up, I can certainly do that and make sure that he hears any issues you all may have or that your constituents may have on the federal level. And then, on the casework side of things, if there's a particular issue where we need to reach out to a federal agency, either myself or one of my coworkers throughout the state can make sure that that gets taken care of for you. So, anyone who does have a concern, please feel free to send them on to our office. I did leave with each of you my email address and my card, so those of you who don't, you know how to find me, feel free to stop by the office, email, call. We are here to serve, and we are excited to be a part of the community here. And I do know that there is a bit of postal, post office issue that's going to come up later on tonight, and, you know, we did hear from one of the members of the community about it, and were able to reach out to the post office. It is, you know, certainly not my job or my role to advocate either for the post office or for, you know, a particular constituent, it's really just to hear both sides of the story. And I did want you all to know that we reached out to them, and they did give us a response that I would like to share with you all, if that's all right, and then I'll get out of the way. It literally just says, "In response to the suspension of the Danville Courthouse Station, the Appalachian District on November 27th gave public notice of the suspension of the Danville Courthouse due to safety issues. The postmaster posted a notice on the door informing customers of the situation and provided information regarding alternatives in receiving their mail at the Danville Main Post Office. In addition, the postmaster made arrangements for several customers to receive street delivery as well as having customers convert to having P.O. boxes at the main post office. The postmaster has also arranged for the courthouse station customers to use a separate entrance at the main facility to expedite their mail retrieval, preventing long wait time issues." I have attached a copy of the suspension notification that's currently posted on the doors at the courthouse station for your review. Unfortunately, we are unable to determine at the time the reopening of the facility. We have consulted with the contractor to evaluate the safety issues and to provide a cost estimate for the repairs. I will update you when I have obtained additional information regarding the amount of time to complete the repairs. And as a, just as a matter of course, I did follow up with our liaison at the pedestal service this week, and I'm still waiting to hear back more on the timeline, and I'll be sure to keep you guys informed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Collins? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Includes the why, they chose this moment in time, I mean, pain has been peeling for a long time, and right before the Christmas season, right in the Christmas season, why they...
Right, I, again, I, I wasn't given any reason why they chose this time. That was one of the concerns that we did hear from, you know, our constituent, that this had been an issue, it wasn't something that just popped up overnight. I can't speak to the past on, you know, why they didn't find it, why they didn't do something about it earlier. I can only say that they did notice it, and, you know, they felt, felt the need to address it. And that's, that's all I...
Other question or comments? Thank you, sir. I see you around town, around the region, all the time, and we really appreciate you being here, and please convey our thanks to our Senator for all this kind of work. And of the many concerns we have in our city and our region, I'll leave you with two words: Megapark.
Yeah. Thank you, and we're certainly working on that. You know, as you all know, the Commonwealth Crossing is something we are honestly working on with, not only Congressman Hurt, but Congressman Griffiths as well, and Senator Warner, so it is really a bipartisan process and something we sincerely hope to move forward on because, you know, we know it will affect you guys as well here in Danville. And that's one of the big five issues I'm working on for the whole area.
Happy holidays, and Megapark.
Yeah, I did want to point out, we would appreciate some help from Megapark.
So, I knew that there's an issue about a Megapark, I'll, I'll look into it and see what I hear. Anything else?
If I could just clarify the, the issue at the Commonwealth Crossing Park in Henry County, it has a bearing on the Megapark, same conflict, that's why the reference was made to the Commonwealth Crossing.
This is a 401 permanent issue.
I totally understood that. There was reference to one park, and there are two parks, I was just making sure he was aware of that. Thank you.
Megapark.
Thank you, you all have a good night. Happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Okay, Federation of Approval of Minutes for the November 19, 2013 regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Rowley, your second. And Mr. Vogler, discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
The following budget amendment items A through D, previously discussed by City Council, introduced for first reading. There will be no separate discussion on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. If discussion desired by a council member or a citizen, item will be removed in the consent process and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve items A through D? Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance under the consent of general items A, B, C, and D for final approval.
Second, Mr. Gilstrap. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Federation zoning approximately 80.619 of the 102.19 acre tract at 229 Northside Drive, from industrial manufacturing to light economic development industrial, to consolidate the boundaries of Anglers Park into one parcel. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Toma.
Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance re-zoning approximately 80.619 of the total 102.19 acre tract at 229 Northside Drive, otherwise known as the portion of grid 2612 block 001 partial 00003 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Okay, second, Mr. Vice Mayor. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Federation authorizing and approving an application for federal funding assistance for recreational trails program, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, to continue the expansion of the Riverwalk Trail. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Yes, hello, I'm Ethan Brown. I represent, excuse me, I represent the interests of Two Witches Binery and Brewing Company, which made me know that we're in our final stages of renovations at this property at 209 Trade Street. I just have a question, I saw where the trail was going to end at Commerce Street, which is about 700 feet, too short of where I'd like it to end. I was curious why Commerce Street?
Mr. King, or Mr. Sprenger want to address that?
There's a certain amount of money that we're able to apply for, for the grant process, and it's basically money. We were able to apply for enough money and match it to, to get to that point.
Okay, so it wasn't related to access or accessibility?
Just, just ability, the ability to fund how far it can go.
Okay, Mr. Toma. Mr. Gilstrap.
Yeah, Mr. Collins. I have a question before.
Yes, sir.
Bill?
Okay.
Yeah, I've quit on it, Bill. So, the next round of funds is the goal, to expand that area?
Yeah, that'll be the next, we have, the next round of funds will start from, from, we have two directions really, a grant to come from Robertson Bridge down, that is going, Public Works is working on, then our grant will pick up at that same spot, our terminus, and continue up that same direction.
So, from Commerce, the next expansion will go past Trade Street where he...
Yes, sir.
He would want, and any timeline?
No, it's all dependent on the ability to receive the grant funds.
Okay.
Mr. Gilstrap.
No, I think I'll just, Mr. Toma just asked the same question, that next round, we would extend it beyond the 700 feet that he's requesting.
Yes, sir, yes. The, the goal is to complete the whole, that whole side, so as we're able to get the funds, we'll continue to, to add on.
Mr. Rowley.
Bill, the, the, what we're talking about tonight, extending, how long does it take to extend that footage? The money we've already received and appropriated, or will appropriate?
Well, we'll, we're, what we're doing, we're, we're just making application for it.
Right.
So, if we receive it, it'll take about a year or so to, to actually get the construction going and get it in place. It's a very challenging section up, up to that area.
All right, so I guess what, in Mr. Brown's case, we're not talking about six months from now, I mean, just going to Commerce, we're looking at a year and a half?
A year or so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure he understood.
Yeah, because it'll be another year before we're back up here again asking to make application for grants.
Right, okay.
Mr. Gilstrap, and then Mr. Vice Mayor.
If, if the project comes under budget, there would be a possibility of extending it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Where is the Sandy River Bridge, you know, the foot bridge, and there, a long bridge, the little, is that including this one, or is that previous one?
That's the one that we've already gotten grant for.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're in the process of, we had the bridge ordered.
And you say this is a challenging one, then, why is it so challenging?
There, well, the, the whole section from, from where we are currently at now up is challenging because our, we're at a very steep bank, and the roads have been built, and the property backs right up to the, to the bank. We're probably going to be looking at some boardwalk and some other solutions to create the space there, possibly a narrower trail.
Thank you, sir. Close the public hearing, anyone else wish to speak? Thoughts about hearing? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Counselor's pleasure, Mr. Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of a resolution authorizing and approving an application for federal funding assistance for the Recreation Trails Program to the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, as provided by Federal Highway Administration of the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Okay, your second? Okay, Mr. Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Federation creating a tourism zone and authorize city manager to submit to Virginia Tourism Corporation a tourism zone designation for River District Certain Areas Zone Central Business and Transitional Office on North Main Street and parcel number 03425. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm, excuse me, I'm Wayne Allen, I'm the owner of the Historic North Theater on North Main Street.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, and for those of you, I've spoken with you on the phone there, Mr. Mayor, nice to meet you, and other council members that I've met tonight, and some I've known before. Thanks for having me, um, thanks for having me in this, in this city, by the way. I love being in Danville, and I've really taken to the city. But I would encourage you all to vote for this resolution to encourage, to include the Historic North Theater and the business area around there. I've spoken to many property owners, business owners, residents, et cetera, and everyone is very encouraged by that, and certainly one of the things that the theater wants to do, is I'm reaching out to the tour bus operators around the region, I'm a member of the Virginia Tour Bus Operators, to bring in tour groups to shows at the theater, and also to stay in Danville for a day or two days, so certainly, I think we should be a major focus of tourism.
Let me welcome you to our city, thank you for investing in our city, you have a wonderful facility. I also understand that you have a marketing background, and we'd like to contact you for some ideas to see how we can help move our city even further.
Well, I'll tell you, in talking to the tourism people at this tour bus operators in Pigeon Forge, they've all heard of Danville, but they sort of didn't realize it's a destination, and I had put it, in fact, just as an aside, one lady said to me, she was standing behind me here, me pitch Danville, she says, "Boy, your convention visitor's really love you." I said, "We don't have one." I said, "But, but I'll tell you, it's a great place," and she said, "Well, it sounds like it," she says, "I want to come there." So, I think it has a ton of potential, and frankly, because I come from outside, I can see it, I mean, I, my other home is in Annapolis, Maryland, and Annapolis, Maryland and Baltimore, Maryland were, were not great places 30 or 40 years ago, and Danville has that great potential to be this little jewel in southwest Virginia. And one last thing, I'd like to encourage you all to come see our magic of Christmas show, I've got flyers, especially this Saturday, because my daughter, my oldest daughter from New Jersey, and her husband, and my grandkids, one reason I bought this place was for my grandkids, they've never seen their grandfather do a big stage show. So, come Saturday, we need a packed house to show them that it's a great city and a great theater, and that their dad didn't make a mistake buying it.
Well, I guess marketing and advertising go hand in hand, right?
It does, no question. You just heard it.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an order to creating a tourism zone, authorizing city manager to submit to the Virginia Tourism Corporation for a tourism zone designation.
Okay, second, Mr. Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Gilstrap.
I'm sure all of you received the email about us extending it, and I thought Joe wrote an excellent response, but could you review with us why we would not extend, I know you said the business commercial district, but the tourism zone would not be extended up to the triangle?
Well, I think it's, it's a matter of what has potential for tourist applications, and generally residential does not, commercial does. And as residential, as the area north of the North Theater becomes commercial in its application, that could be bread and beck, bed and breakfast facilities or anything of that kind, not changing the, the architecture, but being put to commercial uses, I think the council could consider extending the tourism district as far as is appropriate. But right now, from the point that we suggested that you take it north, it's essentially all residential.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye. Federation increasing the annual salary of the mayor and council members FY 2014. Is there a second? Proposed this order. Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, I have not changed my mind since our work session last time. I look at any position that hadn't been looked at as far as salary in 24 years, that's not right, we all know that, which kind of almost think, sometimes it might even be our fault a little bit for, for not looking at that. Personally, I'd like to see us get through this budget session that we're coming up. We've had challenging budget sessions over the last few years, I'd like to get through that, and then readdress this in late June, that, but right now, I just don't feel like I can vote for this increase, even though I would agree, and increase is, is definitely due, and we need to take it up at a later date, but I'd like to get through this budget cycle first before I would vote for it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Toma, Mr. Shanks.
Yeah, I understand the, the reasoning behind it, kind of like what I said at the work session, what Councilman Rowley just said, I understand that it's been 24 years since this has been addressed, and you compared Danville to other cities, we're the lowest of the compensation. Personally, I just don't feel comfortable in supporting this and, and voting to increase our salary and my salary. I just, it's, it's not something that I can do, given the, the budget concerns we have. I, I ran for this position at the salary it is, I'm fine with the salary that we have, I consider it a civic duty, beyond what we're compensated, privileged to do this, it's an honor, and I don't need to be compensated more for it. I understand the other side of it, I, I understand that, that we're, we're paid a lot less than other localities. Me personally, I, I just, I don't want to, I don't want to vote for this or support it, but I do see both sides of the coin, and, and I appreciate everyone's opinion. That's all that I have, Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Chang, and then Mr. Vogler.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start with a question, and then, then offer some comments. Is that okay?
You start.
Start with a question for Mr. Campbell.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I believe this came up in the last work session, it was two weeks ago, and Mr. King, was that a deadline to get in with the July 2014 year budget?
Right.
So, so action had to be taken tonight prior to dealing with the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that, you know, this was a request that was taken up six weeks ago, and it was presented at the last work session before the deadline to talk about. So, instead of spending a little time thinking about it, we kind of got rushed. That has nothing to do with the following comments, I just wanted to make that point. Uh, you know, we're here tonight discussing compensation for members of council, and we would certainly be considered making a lot less than our contemporaries in Hopewell with the population of 22,000, and Harrisonburg, a population of 50,000, Charlottesville, 44,000, and Fredericksburg, 27,000. If we were to approve this budget item, we would be comparable to Stanton and Lynchburg. I, too, like all of you, agreed to serve in this position, chose to do the best I could as a public servant, but members of council make a tremendous sacrifice, from a standpoint personal, lives, family lives, and businesses. In addition to attending lengthy council meetings, which often work until 10 or 11 at night, twice a month, we serve on many boards and commissions that require us to be away from work during the daytime, or other family matters during the nighttime. We agreed to this, we agreed to this, so I'm not going to be upset if we don't move forward with this, but I'm, I'm saying this is an appropriate action after 24, 25 years of not seeing a salary adjustment, that, that's not our fault, that's the fault of various councils that served before us. But I get up in the mornings, or some evenings, I go to bed and look at them there, and I say, "How stupid is this?" I love what I do, I love our city, and I want to serve the city to the best of my ability, but it's not. When you look at the hours spent, it's just not in line with what, what we're compensated with. For the last two years, we've been looking and studying the, the employee wages relative to the market, we've looked at trying to address the shortcomings during the last several budget periods, we have studied and are trying to implement a work for performance pay scale, and we have started to address the salary compression that has affected our city for the last five or six years, or several more years, but a lot of this compression occurred during a recession, and not only were city employees subject to stale wages, a lot of the private, most of the private sector was as well. So, you know, if you're talking about salary compression, we all know what it is, we all felt it for the last few years, including the city council. So, you know, addressing the salary compression issue fully will take a great deal more money over the next four or five budget cycles. It can't, it won't be accomplished this year, or next year, we're starting it, but it's going to take several years. And addressing council's disparity relative to the city's overall budget is not a big number compared to the overall city budget. As the Register and B stated last week, this is not a lot of money considering the time and energy council members spend during, going to council meetings, subcommittee meetings, plus making appearances at events, preparing for meetings, and responding to constituents. As the Register and B stated last week, this is not a lot of money considering the time and energy council members spent doing, going to council meetings, subcommittee meetings, plus making appearances at events, preparing for meetings and responding to constituents. The paper also reflected as follows, quote, "From a public policy standpoint, though it makes little sense for anyone on the city payroll, whether they be firefighters or bill collectors or enforcing laws, to have to work for the same wage year after year." When our former council member David Luther left, he told us, he said, uh, it was almost three years ago, he said, he checked how much time he worked and spent on council issues and discovered his work, he was, his working was for less than minimum wage. I know this is a difficult decision, I know that we can't fix the city's overall salary issues, uh, in one cycle, it's gonna take three or four, but looking at the fact that it's been twenty-five years since there has been an adjustment in council, uh, compensation, and considering how much we're trying to do, I think it's appropriate. Now, I love this city and I work hard for this city, and I don't mind staying where I am without the compensation addition, but I think it's appropriate, I, I respectfully request that we pass this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, um, I've got a question for the city manager and then I had some things I wanted to say, so if we, just hypothetically, if this were to be tabled tonight, does this have to be voted on tonight to take effect, or could it be tabled to a work session and come back in the next meeting, or does this have to happen tonight?
It has to happen tonight to go into effect July two thousand and fourteen. If it's not taken tonight, then you have to wait two years.
Okay.
And it would go into effect July two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. Um, and I'll apologize in advance, this is gonna be somewhat long, but I think it, it's important to be discussed. You know, we're here tonight to discuss the, the issue of city council's salary, but I believe that this discussion is about more than money, it's about the opportunity. But I wanted to start off with the facts, and they, they've been discussed, but I wanted to point them out again. City council members receive five thousand dollars per year, that's pre-tax, and the mayor receives seven thousand dollars. This rate of compensation has been the same since nineteen eighty-nine, which was the last time council received an increase in pay. I think it's important to point out that prior to that going to five thousand dollars, the previous compensation was fifteen hundred dollars. So they went from fifteen hundred to five thousand in nineteen eighty-nine. And to give you an idea of what, what life was like back in nineteen eighty-nine, and admittedly, I had to Google it because I was in diapers, uh, in nineteen eighty-nine, so, uh, the average gallon of gas in nineteen eighty-nine cost one dollar and twenty-five cents. Today, it's over three dollars. But I wanted to, to really start off by saying that I do consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to serve on city council. And if I was financially able to do this job for free, I would, because I love it. I love this city and I've loved every day that I've been blessed to serve on this council, and I thank God every day that the people of this city gave me that opportunity. In an ideal world, we would have dozens of people each election jumping at the opportunity to serve on this council and to be a part of the process, but we don't live in an ideal world. We live in a world with real people, with real families, with real financial responsibilities. You know, last year, there was five seats up for grabs on city council. Seven people ran. Of those seven, five of them were incumbents. That means only two new people ran in an election with five seats available. Those two, the, the two years prior to that and the election before that one, five people ran for four seats. Now, I often hear, and I'm sure that, that other council members hear this, from, from people across the city, that they wish that they had more choices in these elections. Well, I wish that too, and I believe we should have the best and the brightest sitting in these chairs on city council. And if that means that I'm out of this chair in two years, then so be it, because this city doesn't deserve limited options, this city shouldn't have to settle. You know, people run for this seat knowing the time sacrifices that will be made if they're elected, they run knowing the financial sacrifices that will be made, but not everyone is able to make both of those sacrifices. I know this because I've had people tell me this long before this issue of raising council's pay came up. You know, to give you an example, we have a woman who works forty hours, or maybe it's fifty hours a week, she needs every one of those hours to be able to provide for her family. She's also involved in the community, she's passionate about Danville and the direction that we're heading in. She wants to run for city council, but she knows that if she does, she'll have to take time away from her regular job. All of us here know that already. And as Fred already pointed out, you know, our, our former vice mayor David Luther, when he averaged the amount of time out that he spent on his job in city council with what we're paid each month, it didn't even equal minimum wage. So you take that woman who wants to run for city council, she can't afford to give up her hours at her regular job to be paid at sub-minimum wage in the time that she's doing city council. She can't provide for her family on that, so she decides not to run. And that situation right there is a perfect example of why I believe the current rate of compensation for city council is so low that it is disenfranchising lower-income people from being able to run for this office. As I said before, we should want the best and the brightest sitting in these chairs, not just those who are financially able to do so. So regardless of whether they're rich or poor, young, old, black, white, Republican, Democrat, none of the above, all people should be able to run for this office. No one, no one should have to decide between being able to serve on city council and paying their bills. And it's been stated, none of us ran for this seat to make money, and even if this raise is approved tonight, we're not gonna be able to live off of this, we'll all still be working full-time jobs or been retired from a full-time job. But I can't think of a position that hasn't seen its pay raised one penny since nineteen eighty-nine, except for this one. We look at the data of cities across Virginia and what their councils are compensated, Danville's at the very bottom. And yes, some of those cities are better off economically than Danville is, but even Martinsville pays their city council more than Danville does. I didn't ask for this raise, but after looking at the data and looking at the facts, I think most people would say it's time has come. Twenty-four years is too long for any position, whether it's full-time, part-time, seasonal. We all put in a lot of time and effort in this, and this is, it's not about the people who are sitting in this room tonight, this is about for somebody who's sitting out there right now, thinking about wanting to sit in this seat, they should never have to even think that if they're sitting on city council, that they won't be able to, to provide for their family, they're gonna have to take away time from their job and they're not gonna be able to pay their bills each month. I want the best and brightest serving on this council, I want people to be encouraged to run, and I truly believe that this current compensation has sat for twenty-four years and that is discouraging people from being involved in this process. And I'm sure it wasn't an easy decision for city council in nineteen eighty-nine to raise their pay from fifteen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars, but it was the right thing to do then and it's the right thing to do now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Guest Rap.
I'm going to oppose this motion, and I respect what everyone has said thus far. I didn't even know, I didn't know what salary, when I decided to run this office, I didn't know what salary, and it, to me, it did not make any difference. I would hate to think that we would approve this tonight to make money the motivating factor for someone to run. I think it should be public service, love of your community and willingness to sacrifice, and, and that's what we all have done. We have, we have, uh, decided to run and we realized that if elected, it would be a, a sacrifice, but it's a sacrifice of love, we enjoy what we do. I feel very uncomfortable approving myself a raise. If council would desire a salary to be set, fine, take it to the public, let the public decide what we should be paid, not the nine people sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Toma.
Yes, uh, I see Mr. Paul Hamus is here, um, and that reminds me, and, and I think about it, uh, what is the compensation of the school board members?
Fifty dollars a month.
Fifty dollars a month, and how often does a school board meet students?
Twice.
Twice a month, and then they have other responsibilities and they have other meetings they attend, just like us, and they do it for fifty dollars a month. I don't, I mean, they're still getting candidates to, to run. I, I agree with Mr. Gilstrout, I don't, I don't want compensation, when I got my signatures and I went knocking doors and talking to people, I had no idea the compensation for city council. I didn't know, I didn't care, and there may be, I mean, I, Mr. Vogler paints the, the portrait of an individual and, that, that has to choose between paying their bills and being on city council, and, and I respect the, the opinions of people here, but I don't want somebody running because they see how much they're gonna make. I just don't. I want somebody that, that wants to be a part of, of this council and, and, and represent my city long after I'm here because they wanna do it, and people run for school board and they put a lot of hours in for fifty dollars a month. And here, we wanna pay ourselves, I, I don't care what Martinsville pays their city council members, I don't represent Martinsville, I don't care what Lynchburg pays their city council, I represent Danville, and I personally don't feel comfortable giving myself a raise and, and, uh, we've, we've had to lay off people just three budget cycles ago. Every year, it's a fight whether we're gonna keep a library open or not. Uh, you know, we've had to push back health insurance premiums on our city employees. We've, we've had to cut services, and I just, I understand, it's been twenty-four years since we've had compensation increase, but I just, I, I don't support it. I think the, the budgets coming up are gonna be just as difficult and we're gonna have some choices to make, and I personally, uh, do not wanna have to lay off other individuals or have to not be in a position to, uh, to give a raise because we've gotten a raise. I, I do this because it's a civic duty and I like it. I know, we're all good council members and I'm not questioning anybody's intentions on being here, but I, I just don't want people saying, oh, well, now we're getting paid ten thousand, I'll go get the signatures and run, I just don't think that's, there may be somebody out there, but I, I haven't met them, I mean, doesn't mean they don't exist. If that's the case, then we better pay our school board members a lot more too, you know, they've put in a lot of hours and a lot of time. Uh, I'll be voting no against this measure, thank you for the time, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Uh, just wanna say, I was ex, I was very interested when this came on the agenda, and Mr. Toma, I thought about those six years I served on the school board for fifty dollars a month. What stood out to me most was the city employees. And one of the things that I said to myself when this came on, I didn't think about who would run for city council or how much we were getting paid, I was like Mr. Gilstrout, we ran at the same time, I didn't even know what the pay was. But one of the reasons that I'm supporting this is because I wanna put pressure on myself as a city councilman, to be able to, when Mr. King presents that budget to me about city employees increases, I wanna be able to say, if we can give city council a raise, I know we can give the city employees, we can make sacrifices. For the last past couple of years, it has been a tough budget, and our city employees have been through a lot, and I came to the city council tonight waiting to see who would come before that podium with the public hearing, when the mayor said, I now open the public hearing, and I was looking for city employees to guide me through this process, and by them not showing up, they did guide me. So I'll be voting for this and I will let you all know that, Mr. King, when you present that budget to us and you and I talk about it for city employees, I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, and Councilman Jones had some great points, and, and just to reiterate in response to, to what was said a few minutes ago about money being a driving factor in someone running for council, it's already a driving factor, it's driving them away from running because it is so low. You know, there's a reason why only five people run for four seats, maybe some council members like to only have a select few being able to run each election, I don't, I hope we have ten, fifteen, twenty people running. I think the more people you have running, the more ideas you get, it elevates the level of discussion, I think it makes the city a better place. I don't think, even if it's raised to ten thousand dollars, you're gonna have a plethora of people running all of a sudden because they think it's a big payday, I think you're gonna have people running because they love this city and it's not gonna be a financial burden on them to be able to be on city council. Again, I wanna reiterate, I am beyond blessed to be able to sit here, and if we don't approve this raise tonight, I will wake up tomorrow the same way I woke up today, the same way I woke up for the past eighteen months, waking up every day thinking about what I can do, what can I do to make this city a better place? That's not gonna change whether my salary's five thousand or ten thousand, or five hundred, but there are realities out there for people, and, and, you know, you just look at the data, you look at the numbers, I wanna open the floor, and I think, you know, what Councilman Jones just said a minute ago is, is some great points. So I will be supporting this, and for the record, most of the people that I've heard from over the past couple of weeks also understand that this is, uh, something that's time has come, so I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Vice Mayor, um, I sort of vacillated back and forth on this, uh, but there are several good compelling reasons to raise it, uh, the salaries from the other communities, uh, big discrepancy, some of these communities, uh, have council meetings every other week and then occasionally have a work session, uh, so, you know, we're, we're always have a work session, we're probably even fifty-plus meetings a year, it probably averages a meeting a week, times you factor in, uh, committee meetings, uh, budget sessions, uh, it's, it's a lot of meetings. Uh, I think another compelling reason for it is, is I think it will perhaps help people who have, uh, lower incomes work, uh, put their hat in the ring. If we don't approve it, uh, there'll be two more years before we can even approve it, and also remember that the people, several people, several of us are standing for election this, uh, this year, so our, this is, uh, we may, may not benefit from this raise, uh, so it always takes guts to, to do something like that, but, uh, I think overall, uh, I think it's, it's the way to go, I think it's time for increasing the salary and, uh, make it commiserate with other communities.
And Mr. Rowley.
Yes, sir, just some observations, uh, one, sooner or later, this has gotta be looked at, hey, what are you gonna do, go ten more years, sooner or later, it's gotta be addressed, uh, whatever that dollar amount is, it's gotta be addressed. Maybe I was asleep last week, but I don't believe I heard from Mr. City Manager that if we didn't do something tonight, it would be July one, two thousand and sixteen. Now, did, did anybody hear, I did not hear that last week.
No, that wasn't discussed.
Uh, that's why I said in my opening remarks, I'd like to get through this budget cycle and look at it, thinking that all we needed was six months lead time. If we were doing it now for July one, if we did something in June or July one, it would be December thirty-one, that, that was one thing, I didn't know that. I, I, I just went back and looked, I didn't see anything in anything that's been written up for tonight that says that. Number three is, anytime you have the responsibility to give yourself a raise, that's awkward. You know, who wants to do that? I mean, it, it's just very awkward to do. Um, uh, you know, we, we all know about the hours, I mean, we're all on committees, I personally chair two committees, and to me, the ones that need to raise is our spouses. They're the ones that put up with all this stuff we go through and people calling, raising hell all the time, and you know, I mean, that, they're the ones that need to raise. Uh, but, but I'm thinking differently now, just while I'm sitting here, that, that this issue's gotta be addressed. I wanted to get by a budget session and address it in June, after we vote the first week of June, and, and, because twenty-four years, you can't, come on, you gotta do something. Can we agree or disagree with the dollar amount? Maybe so, but, uh, if we're looking to go to July one of sixteen, I'm ready to vote on it tonight then, I mean, that, that is a whole different.
Can we get a legal, yeah, clarification?
Uh, excuse me, are you, you finished, Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, with your hand up.
No.
Okay, it was not, okay.
Yes, I, I am voting for it.
No increase in the salary of a member of council. This is out of state law. Shall take effect until July 1, after the next regularly scheduled general election of council members.
And that was also in the council, in the packet last, last?
It said it would be from July 1 of 14 to July 1 of 15. I'll go back.
Okay, I'm getting pretty close to calling for... If you look, if you look at, on page 58 of the 62-page agenda tonight?
I'm looking at page 60 right now. I see what you're saying, but I didn't read it that way.
Page 58 of the 62, in the council letter, it says that proposed increases shall be adopted four months prior to a council election, with the adjustment taking effect the July 1 after the election. And because the way January falls this year, if it, you miss it by one day. And otherwise, you would have been, it would have been, if it had been July 6, the council, the council election happens to be on May 6 this year.
Mr. Attorney, are you in agreement that it's tonight or two years from tonight?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion, no questions.
I would. You know what? I'm sorry, is it, if I got the floor, Mr. Mayor? That's page 58 of 82 on one item on this agenda. It looked like somebody would have spelled that out a little more, that it's one day late, it doesn't, I mean, it's not telling me that if we don't do it, then it's gonna be July 1 of 16. I mean, I, I don't know. I just thought somebody would have said something to us. First time we've ever discussed one piece of this information was last, a week ago, two weeks ago Tuesday. It looked like somebody would have, instead of putting something on page 52, 58 of 82, and you miss it one day, why didn't you spell out it would be 16? You know, I don't understand.
Okay, I'm getting very close to calling for the vote. I'll act one more time. Further discussion, Mr. Gilstrap. And then I'll make my comment, then I'll call for the vote.
Just like to point out that if this is approved, beginning July 1, cities of Danville's salaries would be higher than Waynesboro, the same as, oh, higher than Lynchburg, higher than Martinsville, and the same as Staunton, higher than Colonial Heights, and higher than Williamsburg. I don't know that we're, shouldn't take that big of a jump, to be higher than the communities that you're now quoting who are behind. Some of them you're quoting were behind, but, you know, you say, we're playing less than Martinsville, okay. Martinsville makes $460 more per year than we do. Colonial Heights makes $100 more per year than we do. Of course, you know, I'm not, I don't, I agree with Mr. Tomer, what Martinsville does, what Charlottesville does is no concern to me. I repeat, if you wanna raise, let the public give you one.
Let me just say that I personally have followed to the council, Danville to the council, Danville to the council, for more than 30 years. And I am aware of what council was doing then, has been doing, and what we're doing today. I don't believe any of us ran for the job for pay. For me, I've been on both sides of the aisle. I first came a member of council in 1996, so I've been the council member. I've been the mayor for almost six years now. January next month will be six years. So I've seen both sides, and I know the responsibility that has escalated among local governments all over the country, most especially here in Danville. So I'm prepared to make a decision and move on. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Mayor Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Shanks?
Yes.
Mr. Tomer?
No.
Mr. Bogler?
Yes.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilstrap?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Central majority, Mr. Attorney.
It's all it needs, but it passed 7 to 2 with super party.
So the motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Affirmation of amending FY 2014 budget appropriation ordinance in the amount $230,000, $230,830 from the tobacco commission, economic development, capital improvement to the Commonwealth machinery building. Uh, Mr. Bogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2014 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenues from the tobacco commission's select projects fund in the amount of $230,830 to further economic development and create jobs, and appropriating the same first reading.
Second, Mr. Vice Mayor, discussion on the motion. First reading. Affirmation of extending line duty coverage to Danville life-saving crew. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution recognizing the Danville Life Saving Crew and First Aid Crew Incorporated as an integral part of the official safety program of the city of Danville for purposes of line of duty act eligibility.
Second, Mr. Vice Mayor, discussion on the motion. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just to say, we certainly appreciate what the Danville Life Saving Crew does, how hard they work for the city. It's the least we can do to help them if somebody is injured or dies in the line of duty. Thank you for what you do.
Further discussion? Mr. Mason?
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Affirmation, a request of United States Postal Service and federal courts retain their presence at 700 Main Street.
Mr. Bogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution requesting the United States Postal Service and federal courts retain their presence at 700 Main Street in the city of Danville, Virginia.
Okay, second, Mr. Vice Mayor, discussion on the motion. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, we have members of the post office here. If it's okay, can we ask them to stand in support of this, please?
Oh, yes, please.
They're in the back row. Thank you for all you all do.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Bogler?
Yeah, I just wanna say, this one is somewhat close to home for me. My father's worked for the postal service for, I guess, over a decade now. So I know firsthand the hard work that the men and women down there put in. So I do wanna thank you all for everything that you do. Specifically talking about this site, I think, you know, you look at the development that's happened downtown, and what's happened in the River District the last couple of years, that's a growing area. So that post office down there is needed now more than it's probably been needed in the last several years. So I'm glad that we're putting forward this resolution tonight, supporting keeping that presence there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so this is close to home for me, too. My wife much prefers coming and going downtown. She wanted to put that in. And it's just, I think, as Mr. Bogler said, this is an integral part of the development of downtown. We need to keep the post office downtown. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Christopher W., I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher Collins?
Four words.
Megapark Postal Service. Affirmation of amending city code to change the term limits for members of Danville to sustain regional industrial facility authority, and to amend the current terms of office on the board members. Each one separately, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Number one, is there a motion? Number one, is there a motion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we update an order submitting Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended Article 712, entitled Regional Industrial Facility Authority, Section 2-293B, entitled Board of Directors to change the number of subsequent terms a member may serve, and to amend the term of office for such board members.
Is there a second? And Mr. Shanks? Discussion on the motion? I'm Mr. Gilstrap.
Explain to me, please, Mr. City Attorney, is this a mandate from, who is requesting this change? And is RIFA, our bylaws don't have to be consistent with theirs?
RIFA's discussing the change. They made an amendment to our bylaws, and what we do is we just make sure that, it's just a clean up, we're gonna make sure that the city code now agrees with the RIFA bylaws.
But the most that I have heard have some concerns about unlimited terms in appointments and elected officials. So why would we not consider a term limit so that we would have new people serving on the different commissions? You know, I think we might have a term limit for city council members. So why, why wouldn't we have, I don't understand why we got to conform to their bylaws.
Well, I mean, for consistency's sake, for bond financing, for any projects between the two, then, I mean, our city code does need to be consistent with theirs. As far as the, why that decision is made, I don't, I don't know. I don't intend to dispute.
Okay, Mr. Shanks?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I'll, one of, one of the issues with RIFA is the longevity of many of the projects that are before RIFA. For instance, the Megapark has been on the agenda, RIFA's agenda, since early 2008. So as far as consistency, it's on, on project, on the nature of the economic development of projects. So that's part of the thought process. Can't say that was on, I was gonna offer that to Mr. Gilstrap.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Counting pledging number two. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution reappointing Sherman M. Saunders as a member of the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority.
Is there a second, Mr. Bogler? Discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, I can't vote for myself, right? Yes, sir. Thank you. Number three, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution reappointing Fred O'Shanks III as a member of the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority.
Is there a second, Mr. Rowley? Discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Number four, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution reappointing J. Lee Bogler Jr. as an alternate member of the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority.
Is there a second, Mr. Rowley? Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Communication, Mr. King?
No reports.
Okay, Mr. Whitfield?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. DeMassey?
Nothing, sir.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Just want to wish everyone a blessed and wonderful Merry Christmas, and just want to remind the citizens about the community Christmas dinner. I'll be there volunteering my time, and a lot of citizens in churches in the community has been supporting this for a number of years. Happy Merry Christmas in heaven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Very simply, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
To the post office staff, we sincerely thank you for all that you do. And to those of you, this has been a very busy year during this holiday season. If you allowed someone to borrow or steal your happy, please go out and take it back during this holiday season. Take your happy back. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, just Merry Christmas to everyone, and again, the Christmas dinner, it's a big event, and please come out and help us. This past weekend, Avery had their graduation, and I'm proud that my nephew is now a graduate of the Business Administration School at Avery. Now, he lives near Richmond, and actually, he and the 13 other people that went through the course with him, I don't think ever set foot on the Avery campus. But there is a Avery campus in Richmond, and they regularly went there, and they earned their MBA degree. So I think a lot of us don't, didn't realize how widespread and the Avery is, and what they do for not only the community but for the state. Also, along that line, my sister, a couple of months ago, I showed her around the downtown and showed her what, all the changes and renovations. Well, then she was exercising in a gym about a month ago, and she lives near Hopewell, and there was a former citizen of Danville who wasn't really aware of what was going on. And when he came back to visit his family, he was amazed by how the city had changed. So he spread the word. He told his family, and he tells his friends in Richmond. So the point is, you need to spread the good word. You talk to two or three people and tell them how great things are down here and how we're advancing, the word gets out. One person tells another and another. So be positive for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, Doc Miller, Avery actually has 14 campuses around the state, including Danville. We actually have more people, adult programs around the state. We actually have more adults than we have students here in Danville. We have about 1,200, 1,300 around the state, and about 1,000 here in Danville for 2,300. But it is a great graduation, well over 20 percent, the president said 20 percent, but it was well over 20 percent military people there.
Mr. Rowley, Mr. Jones, was that marketing or appetite?
That was both, both, both. Both, that's right, that's right, that's right. And it was great to have the governor here. He had a great talk to the graduates, would have been his last graduation speech in his term. And I must apologize to Mr. King that I have found on page, the third paragraph on page